All right, I've called a order of Salina City Planning Commission meeting for February 19th, 2019.
And our absentees today are Mr. Baffin, Mr. Freiberger, and Mr. Story. They all, three of them contacted us and said they were not able to be there here this afternoon. So we appreciate those few brave elements to come.
I guess that brings us to the approval of the minutes for January 15th, 2019. We'll have a motion to approve the minutes. It's been motioned in second. All in favor? Vote yea.
Who was the second on that? Ms. Jackson?
That brings us to new business.
Our public hearing items today are two. The first one is Application Z191. It's filed by Mr. Joe Hill on behalf of the Joe Hill Trust. And the request is a change in zoning district classification from I-2 light industrial to R-2 multiple-family residential to allow construction of two new residential dwellings at southwest corner of Reynolds Street and Lincoln Avenue. The subject property is legally described as lots 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, and 12, Block 5 of the North Park addition to the City of Salina and addressed as 935-941 Reynolds Street. So this is a public hearing and the property that we are discussing as part of this hearing was part of the North Park addition platted back in 1889. The request area is made up of six lots that are 25 feet wide and 120 feet deep. And combined together, they create an area that's 120 feet wide and 150 feet deep. So the property was historically part of a mobile home park. However, that property was cleared and the mobile home units were all removed about five years ago. And the only structure that was retained is an existing 17-foot by 40-foot building. And aside from that building, the rest of property is currently vacant. The applicant in this case purchased the mobile home park property in 2014. And in 2017 constructed a building on the south, 125 feet of the property. The plan that is before you or request that's before you today is the applicant owns or the family owns Bob's Pond Shop at 925 West Lincoln, which is directly west of the lots facing Reynolds. The applicant met with staff and expressed an interest in being able to construct two dwellings in close proximity to the pond shop. In our discussions, it was determined by staff that the property in question is zoned I-2 light industrial and that a change in zoning district classification would be required before we could issue any permits for any new residential construction. So the applicant then filed an application requesting to rezone lots, six lots on the west side of Reynolds. Staff looked at the plan for constructing two dwellings and the fact that there was a corner lot at Lincoln and Reynolds. And we determined that about 150 feet of frontage was needed to accommodate two dwellings facing Reynolds. At this point, the applicant's uncertain whether he will construct single-family homes or duplex or duplexes. So R-2 zoning is being requested. And that R-2 zoning would allow for the construction of either one or two family dwellings. So the overall parcel size that's being discussed is 18,000 square feet. It's 120 feet of frontage and it is 120 feet deep. So the minimum lot size in R-2 district is 6,000 square feet. So the proposed lots meet or exceed all of the dimensional requirements that would be needed for R-2 construction, whether it was single-family or two-family homes. We have found that ever since 1977, when the city was comprehensively rezoned and remapped, this property has been zoned I-2. And that was notwithstanding the fact that there was a mobile home park on it. That I-2 zoning made the mobile home park non-conforming. So there's no real reason why this property could not be successfully redeveloped under the existing I-2 zoning. But staff does believe it's also suitable for the construction of two-family dwellings so they could reside in close proximity to the business, which is Bob's Pond Shop. So while this is not a site that is ideal for new home construction, it was formerly used for residential purposes. And there is an existing dwelling that's right across the street, also zoned I-2, but is in fact a residential dwelling. So we are in a transition zone between residential and business, both zoning and uses. And Lincoln Avenue contains a mix of commercial, light, industrial uses east of Broadway. And then as you work your way farther east, when you get east of Reynolds, it becomes more solidly residential. And so historically, looking at the zoning map, this back alley here was kind of the dividing line between the solidly residential and the commercial and industrial. But if you look at the east side of Reynolds, there's still a mix of uses and zoning there. So while those residential properties on the east side of Reynolds are zoned I-2, they do establish the presence of residential use in the area. And if you look just a half block further to the west side of North 13th Street, that is solidly residential. So we don't believe this request would be out of character with the surrounding area. The R-2 zoning would be more restrictive and not less restrictive than what is in place today. Rezoning it to R-2 would allow vacant property to be put back into productive use. And it would blend in with the residential properties to the east. There are no real utility or public service barriers that make this unsuitable for residential redevelopment. If we look at the comprehensive plan, this is shown as a transition area, transitioning from residential to commercial along Broadway. But we also have an area called the West Downtown or West Economic Development Hub. And there's a description of that in your report. And it suggests that the existing urban fabric should be maintained through the reuse of existing buildings and supported through infill development of a similar form. This area will continue to be attractive to businesses that need either rail access or location that offers small warehousing and distribution space. As an extension of downtown, arts and mixed-use loft development should be encouraged. And it speaks to the opportunity for live-work units with office or service space and on the first floor and residential above. But overall, it says this area should maintain its small-scale character by providing space for compatible support services. You could view this request as a live-work arrangement. It's just that it would be a live-work arrangement in close proximity instead of in the same building. On page six, we've identified some possible findings for you to consider. One would be that this site has historically been used as a residential mobile home park. And rezoning this to R-2 would be consistent with that historical use of the property. There are two existing residential dwellings on Reynolds to the east and all along North 13th Street, which does establish a presence of residential dwellings in this neighborhood. This would not create an isolated residential area. The surrounding properties are modestly sized, with most of the properties being used to operate service-oriented businesses. All the needed utilities are in place. And this property lies in a transition area between the Broadway Commercial Corridor and the residential area southeast of Broadway. And so staff believes that if this request is approved, it would kind of provide a linkage or transition between the Broadway Commercial Corridor and the residential areas to the east and southeast. So in considering this request, you have the following options. One would be to recommend approval of R-2 zoning as requested to allow the construction of new residential dwellings. You could postpone action on this request if you think additional information is needed to make a recommendation. Or you could recommend denial of the applicant's request. If you concur with the findings noted above, then we think a motion should be made to recommend approval of the requested zoning change for this parcel in Block 5 of the North Park addition. So with that, we'd be open to any questions you have about the specific request or the area. I would defer any questions about specific plans for the property to the applicant. But we'd be happy to address anything about the historical use or the surrounding area.
Any questions?
Remind me, what are some examples of I-2 industrial or I-2 buildings that might be in the area or that could be in the area?
Well, actually, although it's not purely an I-2 use, the Bob's Pond Shop building here is actually zoned I-2. And it is, but we would consider that more a commercial than an industrial use. There is some buildings associated with care engineering up here. But John, if you want to go to the zoning map, please, so that we can look at where the I-2 zoning is.
So light manufacturing is?
It would be considered things like auto repair, warehousing, light manufacturing, well-drilling repair, things of that nature. It's not showing up on this map because we still have to get it changed. But the Foley Equipment Site that was across the street, that was rezoned from C-6 to I-2. But there's a warehouse building here. There's a storage building that was built here. In this particular area, because of the size of the lots, I think Hedges Sign Company is right here. There's a trucking company over by 13th. So it's small-scale industrial businesses. And so obviously, you could do things at a larger scale. But the I-2 here, the things that are allowed in I-2 that aren't allowed in commercial districts would be welding, light manufacturing, warehousing, things of that nature. The pond shop, although it's zoned I-2, does not require I-2 zoning. A pond shop would be allowed in a commercial zone. It's just that this block was historically zoned I-2. And the direct frontage on Broadway was preserved as commercial and these uses in this little pocket here. If you want to go back to the aerial photo, John, and maybe zoom in a little bit to the south. But most of those are smaller buildings and they are service-related businesses and things that wouldn't ordinarily found in a straight commercial zone like you would have on Broadway or Ninth Street.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present? Is there anything you'd like to add?
I'll speak for Mr. Hill. We're concerned about--
Could I get your name and address first, please?
Gabe Ruppright.
Hi, how are you doing? That's a formality.
Contractor for Mr. Hill.
Do you have an address?
So the applicant is concerned about Lincoln Street and setbacks for the building that he's talking about or the housing that he's talking about. It's required that he sets back 20 foot right now. But his offices or the pond shop and the residential house right now are about right on the property lines. He's trying to keep as much of the I-2 property as possible and then turn the rest of it into R-2.
I understand.
So what we explained at the outset, it is better to overestimate than it would be to underestimate in terms of the land area needed. Staff's determination of going, which is essentially 150 feet, six lots of 25-foot width this direction is because we wanted to make sure that we could accommodate a setback on the corner lot there, which under new construction would have to be a minimum of 20 feet. What we agreed to look at would be to look at what the prevailing setback is along the south side of Lincoln. And we would start probably at Barney and go back to the east. And if we determine what that prevailing setback is, the new construction would be allowed to match that. So the option that we have is, one option would be for you to recommend a lesser change. Or the other option would be for you to recommend the full area and allow us between now and before it would have final approval by the City Commission to confirm those things. But this group, this planning commission as a body, cannot reduce building setbacks. That's what the Board of Zoning Appeals is for. And so what we were trying to do is to make it as simple as possible and not require variance where variance wasn't needed. But the option would be for the applicant to request that you rezone a lesser area. But we can't guarantee to you or to the applicant that if you reduce this and say, instead of rezoning six lots, you reduce four, we can't say here with certainty that the plans will fit on 100-foot frontage. And so that is the concern. So if, I guess, in response to your concern, our concern is that we go through this whole exercise, we rezoned only 100 feet, and then we're unable to approve building permits because we don't have enough lot area to have the setbacks and to accommodate the dwellings. And so the plans that I was given to look at had only a four-foot setback from Lincoln. And we're not sure that we certainly would not be able to issue a permit for a new dwelling with only a four-foot setback from Lincoln without either a variance or without doing a lot more research to figure out what the prevailing setback is on the south side of Lincoln. So our approach was to look at the land area that was needed to build two dwellings that would conform with the R-2 setback requirements. So that is the conundrum that we're faced with. So we can, at the request of the applicant, you can rezone a lesser area than the six lots. It's just there'd be a certain risk that those four lots wouldn't be large enough to accommodate two dwellings.
So regardless if we approve zoning change today, they'd still have to go to the appeals board to get that setback changed?
It is not a certainty. We would have to know exactly what setback was being requested from Lincoln Avenue. And then we would have to go in the entire length of that street and figure out what the-- So if you have a series of blocks, and even though the required setback is 20 feet, if all the existing homes have a 10-foot setback, then you can match it. But I don't know what all the individual setbacks are up and down Lincoln. And we would have to get the applicant to tell us that the only thing that works for them is a five-foot setback, four-foot setback, 10-foot. We need to know what that is. But we did, we came up with the six lots because we felt that's what was needed to accommodate two dwellings and meet all the setback requirements.
So it's a little more complicated than--
Oh, I think there's just some misunderstanding. We're actually good with the six lots. We're just looking to line it up on Lincoln. So if you were to draw a straight line from the house that's on the east side of Reynolds there, on the corner of Reynolds and Lincoln, that residential house, back to where the pond shop is, if you were to have a straight line there, that's, we just want to line up the new building, the new house, with those properties.
And what is that setback exactly?
Well, from the curb, it would be probably 20 feet, 16 to 20 feet. I mean, without measuring it, we've never measured it. But that's what we were, that's what I've been trying to say. But we're good with the amount of lots because we can always, you know, do something down the road. But we agree with Mr. Andrew about keeping that amount of lots.
I just, the reason we didn't include a site plan or anything in the packet is that we just wanted to focus on whether you think it's suitable for residential use. And if you do, if you agree with that, then we can work with the applicant in more detail about their plans. But until this body weighs in and says whether you think it's suitable for residential zoning and use, once you tell us that, then we can work at that in a little more detail. But we didn't want to get into the details of the actual plans at today's meeting, only whether the use should be industrial or residential.
Because the area is such a mixed bag, I don't know that it would-- and then this particular area would be utilized. I mean, I don't know how, it's not a good thing, you know?
Any questions for the applicant?
It's hard to imagine. I think I've seen an aerial photo. At one time, there were 27 mobile home units on that lot arranged in a horseshoe, so.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah. I move that we recommend that we approve the requested zoning change from I-2 to R-2 for the 18,000 square foot parcel in Block 5.
It's been motioned in second. All in favor?
Aye.
What will happen with that is that we'll go as a recommendation to the City Commission for an order-- for an ordinance that would actually change the zoning. And then, in the meantime, I will, we can't tell it from the aerial photos, but I'll have to pull the plans for those individual houses working east, and we'll figure out what the setback is for each of those, and then report that back to you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Thanks for your help.
Thanks for your time. So, the next item.
We have a second public hearing item, and that item is a conditional use application that's filed by Cody Pearson requesting approval of a conditional use permit to establish and operate an e-cigarette establishment or vape shop in a C-3 shopping center district. And the proposed location is the Sunset Plaza Shopping Center. If I understand correctly, Mr. Chairman, you'd like to recuse yourself on this item?
Yeah, I think it'd probably be best.
Allow you to step down, and then we'll give our report. Well, members of the Commission, this is a public hearing on an application requesting approval of a conditional use permit for an electronic cigarette establishment, also known as vapor lounge or vape lounge. And some of you may or may not recall, the Planning Commission spent quite a bit of time in 2014 looking at hookah bars, vapor bars, e-cigarette lounges, trying to understand what, in fact, the use was, what potential impact they had on health and safety of the public, understanding whether it was, in fact, smoking or not smoking. So, in 2014, there was a moratorium on the opening and operation of new vapor bars or expansion of others in the city. And during that time, there were a number of definitions that were developed, but essentially, the definition of what we're talking about today is a facility, building, structure, or establishment whose business operation, whether it's as principal or accessory use, includes utilizing a heating element that vaporizes, a liquid solution that releases nicotine or a flavored vapor, including but not limited to establishments known as vapor lounges or e-cigarette lounges. And so, after all was reviewed by the Planning Commission, City Commission, and it was determined that the activity involved here was not smoking as defined by the city's indoor smoking ordinance, because we're not dealing with a tobacco product, and we're not dealing with burning, we're dealing with vapors or vaporizing. So, the approach that the Planning Commission recommended and the City Commission approved was to make these uses a conditional use that would be reviewed and approved on a case-by-case basis. And some of the advantages of using this process is it maintains a level playing field for all retail and commercial property owners by not prohibiting these types of establishments, gives you the opportunity to consider all relevant factors deemed important in deciding whether to approve or deny such a use at a given location. It provides flexibility to determine whether special conditions might be necessary due to site factors, neighborhood context, proximity to youth-oriented areas, other factors. It allows for applicants, property owners, business operators, residents to express their views and have them taken into consideration. And then, finally, a conditional use permit is revocable if the owner or operator fails to comply with existing laws or conditions of approval. So, we have, as a commission, you have reviewed and approved three locations within the city of Salina and denied one. There's one that was approved in Galaxy Center on Planet Avenue. There was one that was approved at 117 East Iron in the downtown area. There was another one on East Iron proposed that was not approved. And then, most recently, you acted on one in the Craft Manor Shopping Center, known as Yogi's Vape Lounge. So, the applicant in this case is proposing to lease a 50-by-60-foot tenant space in the north-south building of the Sunset Plaza Shopping Center. This is addressed as 1103 West Crawford, and it was formerly occupied by a Radio Shack space, and it directly to the south adjoined an H&R Block tax preparation office. The role of your, to take in this case is to evaluate the proposed use of the property and determine whether an electronic cigarette establishment would be compatible with surrounding uses. This hearing process allows the commission to receive public input about and establish appropriate conditions of approval for the proposed use. So, Sunset Manor is part of a C-3 shopping center district. This Sunset Manor addition was platted in 1952. Construction of the main parts of this shopping center began in 1959. There've been a number of additions over time. This particular location complies with all C-3 zoning requirements. There are some non-conforming setbacks, and were built not subject to any landscaping regulations, so there are some aspects that are non-conforming, but it was conforming when it was built. There are no special regulations applicable to vapor lounges that locate in a C-3 district. So, as far as welfare and convenience to the public, there are pluses and minuses that have been identified as far as health benefits or health concerns about vaping products. They are promoted as a safer, healthier alternative that's often used to help people quit tobacco smoking, and so such an establishment could contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public by making this legal product available in a convenient, high-traffic location. One question for you is whether you think filling this tenant space with a vapor lounge would contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public. One of the concerns about vapor lounges is accessibility to minors, and the Sunset Plaza is in the general vicinity of Sunset Elementary School, but there's no real specific youth activity centers in the neighborhood. This business could promote the welfare of the public by providing an alcohol-free location for people over 21 to gather, relax, and socialize. The applicant points out that this use will not alter or impact the exterior of the structure, everything would occur indoors, and there wouldn't be any physical changes that are Most of our vapor lounges have used a combination of wall signs and window signage, so we would like the applicant to clarify, one, whether minors will be allowed in the establishment, or that was the plan, and how they plan to advertise this vape shop, and whether the existing pole sign would be utilized. There is certainly more than adequate parking available within the Sunset Plaza parking lot. We've determined that about 12 spaces within the lot would need to be allocated for this particular tenant space, and we have found that these types of establishments are not high-traffic generating or high-turnover type uses. So, as far as your alternatives this afternoon, you could approve the conditional use permit application filed by Mr. Pearson to open and operate the Cloud Cafe vape shop. You could approve an application subject to specified conditions or subject to revisions being made to the plan. You could postpone consideration if you feel you need additional information, or you could deny the application if you find that establishing a vapor lounge here would cause injury to surrounding properties. What we have attached there on page nine is kind of a standard set of conditions that we developed as part of our text amendment, and then has essentially been applied consistently to the other vapor lounge locations. And so, those conditions there are consistent with what the Planning Commission has done in previous cases. So, with that, I would be open to any questions the commission might have about this location or about the activity involved at vapor lounges.
Regarding number one, minors shall not be permitted to enter the premises, I thought we did approve that they could, as long as there was a designated area.
I think that would be, I would be hard-pressed, and if we had more people here, we'd run upstairs to check, but I do believe that you are correct, that we did modify the condition number one in the last case of the previous two cases on Iron and on Galaxy Center. They had no interest and did not want to allow for minors, but the one on South Night, the Craft Manor, did, and you did modify that condition, and it was either to allow them in a specified area or allow them if accompanied by an adult.
Because I think-
So, that would be another option, but that's one of the reasons we wanted the applicant to clarify whether that was their desire or intent to allow minors on the premises, because under Kansas law, minors cannot purchase the product, but it doesn't mean they can't enter the premises.
And I remember the, I think why I remembered that was, on a day like today, you wouldn't want to leave your child out in the car while you ran in.
Right.
And so, I thought, yeah.
It may well have been if they were accompanied by an adult.
Definitely.
There haven't really been any, there's been some additional research and things, and there have been, at one time, because the FAA hadn't caught up with it, that they didn't prohibit vaping on airplanes, but now they do. The city-county building didn't prohibit vaping in the city-county building because they didn't know what it was. Now, they do. So, there has been some tightening of, it is not smoking, it is not subject to the same rules as would tobacco smoking, but there has been some tightening of rules as to where people can vape, particularly in indoor or enclosed spaces. But that's only real recent changes that have occurred in terms of regulation.
What was the circumstances on the east, or the east iron one that was denied? Do you recall what the logic was on that?
Some of it was a concern about having them over-concentrated. There is not a, there's not a, that was discussed, but not, in some cases, some ordinances, there was a requirement that shops be separated by more than 500 feet or 1,000 feet or that type of thing. That was not adopted, but at the particular time, there was one across the street, and there was just a feeling of not wanting to concentrate them in a single area.
Just have more diversity.
So, do the current applicant's request permission for under 18?
We would need to hear from them about whether that is their desire or not.
My name is Cody Pearson. 219 Fairdale Road is where I live. We would not want, pardon me, we would not want parents to leave their children in an unattended car, so, yes, we'd want that sort of allowance, but we also intend and will be compliant with both Kansas and federal regulations that prohibit the consumption of tobacco or vape products by people under 18.
So, if we modified number one to say minors under the age of 18 shall not be permitted to enter the premises unless accompanied by an adult, that would work?
We would be comfortable with that.
Does that make sense to the commission? I think that is what we did with the Yogi's vape shop on Ninth Street.
Is there any push?
The other question we had was about what you were proposing in the way of signage. I think we did find that there was like a vacant pole sign over there that maybe Radio Shack had used at one time.
Yes.
And is there any plans to utilize that, or you just going to rely on wall signs and window signs?
We would want to maximize our signage.
Okay.
So, we would hope to use that pole sign as well.
Okay. And that doesn't require any, you can change out the face of a sign without a sign permit, change the name of the user or tenant, but we just wanted to clarify for the benefit of the commission whether that was part of the plan. So, what you're seeing here is what it looks like now. Clearly, the Radio Shack sign would be removed, but there is a vacant pole sign in the vicinity that Radio Shack used to advertise on, and that if the owner of Sunset Plaza allows that as part of the lease, then we wanted to make sure that the Planning Commission understood that that was a possibility.
Yeah, that is our intent, to use that pole sign.
You were about to pose a question.
On the news last week, I heard something about raising the age to 21 for smoking and that. Would that be better to address, if that ever happens, than at this point?
If that were to happen, we would comply with state and federal.
Right. But I don't know if in our wording of our deal, if we would just address that in the wording, or if we would just worry about it after it happens.
Part of it would be, however, the state or the federal health authorities would amend that. Right now, under the state law, the term refers to minors, and the legal definition of a minor is under the age of 18. If they changed it, then it might be that a minor is under the age of 21 or 21 or younger, in which case the term minor would include that. But our interpretation would be that a minor is how it is defined by state law and not how it's written in the staff report. The parentheses are there just to explain, as an explanatory language, of how the state currently classifies minors. But the Kansas law prohibits the sale or consumption of tobacco products or e-cigarette products by minors under the age of 18. That's the present law.
Don't have our leader to...
Yeah. So, you don't have anybody to take the lead, but if someone there wants, if you feel like you've got no more questions for the applicant, then you can bring it back to the commission for discussion and consideration of a motion. So, I guess I'll see, does anyone have any more questions for Mr. Pearson?
No.
Well, I move. Are we ready for that? Okay. I move that we approve the conditional use application subject to specified conditions and revisions to the plan for adding electronic cigarette establishment/vapor lounge to a Sunset Plaza tenant space in this location.
And that would be subject to the ten-
Right.
-conditions with number one modified to allow for minors accompanied by an adult. So it would be the conditions you see on page nine with number one modified. So. And we have a second from Mr. Lang.
Yep.
So we are ready to see how much support there is for that. So all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Unlike the previous action, that is final action. This doesn't go on to the city commission, so that you have an approved use at this point.
It was our understanding there was maybe a-
There's a waiting period to see if there's a protest, but there's no further action required. All we would do is see if, based on the lack of feedback that we got and the support from the shopping center owner, that seems very unlikely. But we'll send you a letter and it'll just advise you that when the 14 days is passed, that you have an approved use. But you can be doing things in there in the meantime.
Okay. Very good.
Your location is approved, though.
Thank you.
So we'll let the vice chair get back to his appointed spot.
So next, just we have preliminary discussion items.
We have brought two things forward for you that we would like the commission to consider authorizing. Just as a reminder to the commission, any citizen or property owner, the planning commission or the Sliney City Commission may initiate changes to the ordinance, a zoning ordinance, but the staff does not have that authority. So we have brought two items. One, we have rather lengthy information. We provided about some changes to state law and changes to the FCC regulations as they apply to those matters. And so we have met with the city attorney. We've had kind of outlined a plan of action. And some of you had the joy of reviewing what we called the small cell or the DAS facilities that are located primarily on light poles or power poles around the community. And our current zoning ordinance says if you want to do that and you want to put up a new support structure where there's not a pole presently and you are in a residential area, then those particular applications have to go before the planning commission and have a public hearing. And so I think we've had 32 of those have come in and five of those ended up going to the planning commission. And one was withdrawn and one was denied and three ended up getting built. But I don't, I don't have them all memorized, but I do know that, for instance, directly across from Water's True Value on the corner there of Ohio Street, there is a power pole. And on that power pole, it has a DAS wireless facility on it. And there's about 30 of those around town. Those are on power poles. And so we had one set of rules for cell towers or facilities that were built on private property. And then we had another set of rules dealing with those put in the right-of-way on small support structures. But the way that the legislature and the FCC is dealing with those, they're kind of blending them together. So our recommendation is that we merge those two sections into a single ordinance that would deal with all wireless facilities. But our recommendation on that item would be for the planning commission by motion to authorize staff to initiate a text amendment that would result in a set of code amendments that are needed to merge those things into a single ordinance and bring us into conformance with state legislation and FCC regulations. So on page five there, our request is that the planning commission by motion authorize us to initiate such a text amendment.
I still move.
It's been motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we will initiate that one. And then the next one that we have, and it's seemingly, just when you think it's, it can't change or it's solved, it changes. But we have, there's just a general bright line in the, painted bright line between signs allowed on private property and signs not being allowed in the public right-of-way. And the only exceptions to that in the code are, in our downtown area, we have buildings that sit right on the property line and they can have projecting signs that go over the sidewalk and extend into the right-of-way. But that's the only place where those are allowed. If they're put up on the alley side, that requires a special agreement. And we're not really clear why that needs to be the case, where if you put them on one side of your building, staff can approve it. If you put it on the other, staff can't approve it. We'd like to look at that. We'd like to get clear what those exceptions are. Obviously, we have traffic signs, stoplights, railroad warning signs, all sorts of regulatory signs are in the right-of-way. And then the Kansas legislature has mandated that cities have to allow political signs in the right-of-way during election season. And cities around the state are trying to figure out how to react to that. We also have the question put forward that if signs are not allowed in the public right-of-way, then how can you have a sign on a City Go bus bench that's in the city right-of-way? So we need to address that. And then the question of temporary signs. But what we would, are requesting here is that by motion, you authorize staff to initiate a text amendment that would essentially get all the various exceptions and related to right-of-way signs and get them into one place. So our recommended action would be for you by motion to authorize us to initiate a text amendment to further clarify what types of signs are and are not allowed on public right-of-way. So if you think it's a good idea to have signs on bus benches in the right-of-way, we need to make sure our code says that that's okay, but other types aren't. So we just need to be clear on what we think's okay and what is not okay. And so there's nothing in the city code currently that says you can, you can paint a sign on a bus bench in the right-of-way, but if somebody else puts a sign out in the right-of-way, then we're going to tell them to move it. So we just need to be consistent and we need to clarify when you all think it's okay and when it's clutter. So that is one thing that the, there's lots of First Amendment issues associated with signs, but one thing that has always been the rule of law is that you can put signs on your own property, but not out in the public way behind the curb. And if we allow exceptions to that, we have to be very specific about articulating those exceptions and then that we've thought about it and here's why we're allowing this, but not allowing that. So our request would be a motion to authorize us to initiate a text amendment, so we can take a look at that.
We have a motion.
I move to authorize staff to initiate a text amendment to section 42-503 of the sign regulations to further clarify what types of signs are and are not allowed on public right-of-way.
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 So our final item, and I'm not sure that anyone here present asked for this. It may be that the members who are not present were the ones that asked for us to report back on this. But John, if you have that photograph, if you could please put it up on the screen. The only one I absolutely remember commenting on that was Ms. Good, who said that her thought was that if the lot between Arby's and Kentucky Fried Chicken developed, that this really wouldn't be that visible from Broadway. But we had-
It was far away.
We had a, when we did our annual report and we're summarizing some cases, we had our planning commission chair and a couple others at least indicate to staff that they did not think that this materialized in the field the way that they thought it was being presented and acted on by the planning commission. So we have just provided you a written report of what transpired, what we reviewed in the end product. And just, partially just to refresh the commission that the, what was, what we were attempting to carry out was that the conditions were that the outdoor storage area was essentially, it turned out to be roughly 65 feet by 200 feet. And from staff's perspective, it's in the location where they said they were going to put it. The dimensions match. The outdoor storage area shall be enclosed by black powder-coated chain-linked fence eight feet in height. We believe, we issued a permit for an eight-foot fence. It does have some barbed wire at the top for security purposes. Landscape buffer plan for the area between the fence and outdoor storage area in the property in the north shall be submitted to and approved by staff. This was the plan that was submitted. The plan consisted of eight juniper evergreen trees located on the north side of the area. At the time this was considered and at the time that it was even installed, Kmart was still in business. Kmart is now closed and not in business. Nonetheless, we interpreted what planning commissioners were saying and what we feedback received at the hearing, that this was probably really distant from Broadway, that if you had a building between Kentucky Fried Chicken and Arby's, that would further obscure this from Broadway. And the concern, the real wide-open view was from the parking lot to the north. And so the fence itself is not screening, so this buffer was put in. And we believe it was put in accordance with the plan that we approved. But we wanted to bring it back to you to let you give us feedback if there's something about this that you believe staff missed or misinterpreted or misapplied. And so I said, we may not have all the right commissioners here for that, but we went down through the conditions and, to the best of our ability, got the applicant, we thought, to carry them out as per the conditions, so.
Is there a photo from Broadway?
There is not, but I, I can't be, we can certainly provide that. But I was not in control of the camera at the time, but I anticipated that you would probably ask for that. So we can certainly go get a photograph from the area between Kentucky Fried Chicken and Arby's looking back to the west. And so we don't, we don't believe that they stack products above the height that was specified. As far as we can tell, the fence is eight feet in height. We made it quite clear that the black powder-coated fence was to try to make it as attractive as possible, but it wasn't a screening fence. It was an open outdoor area. And it didn't, it didn't seem practical to make them plant material. It's not a direct comparison, but one of the bigger challenges that I have worked on in terms of these kinds of situations is the area, the intersection of Schilling and Ninth Street could potentially be a fairly attractive four-sided intersection, but for the fact that we have a West Star substation parked on the northeast corner. So we couldn't move the substation. So all the planning commission could do at the time, and that was in 1993, was to require the developer to plant juniper trees all the way around the substation. And so many of those have matured and they've done pretty well. And it's, it's better with those plantings around it, but you still know there's a substation there. And so we just want, we recognize that if we allowed this outdoor storage area, it was still going to be, you could still tell that it's an outdoor storage area. But the emphasis that staff put on it was to try to buffer it from the north. And hopefully, those will grow taller, closer together. But we want, we will get the photo view from Broadway, but we wanted to at least provide you with a photograph of how it turned out, what the conditions were. And we're open to any feedback that you have about what we may have misapplied or misinterpreted. But it is an outdoor storage area. It's not camouflaged completely, but-
It's very neat.
I would say the only surprise really is the fact that it wasn't a covered-
More solid fence.
Right. I mean, I thought we talked a lot about the, you know, the ability to put something on the fence such that it was, you know-
Yeah, didn't the photo that they, the example one they gave us seemed to be more solid?
I don't know if they talked about, I don't know if they talked about slats or anything. I don't recall them proposing slats, but there's, there's two methods that we have used. We've used one that we don't allow now, that was allowed for the storage yard behind the West Star offices there at Edison in South Ohio. If you drive down Edison towards the Y and you look at that very closely, the slats are all crumbling and falling off. And eventually, there'll be nothing but a chain-linked fence there with dissolved slats and we'll have to send them some kind of letter. The other newer product is, it's kind of a mesh product and we've, we've used it in the case- of some salvage yards, especially when it comes to gates where you don't want the gates to be so heavy they won't swing. It's just that the mesh between sunlight and Kansas winds will last like two or three seasons and then have to be replaced. So the reason that we don't, we will use mesh if nothing else will work, but we don't approve the vinyl slats as screening just because they don't last. But I don't recall any plan that they put forward or any examples that they gave where there was anything within that that made it sight obscuring. But we're, it's short of masonry or solid wood. There's not a lot of great alternatives out there that are sight obscuring. There is a mesh fabric that you can put in in those cases, but it's not very durable in Kansas just because of the wind and sunlight, so. But we will get you a Broadway perspective and a different perspective there and then you can judge from that. But it is, it's a very large storage area. We were somewhat surprised that, you know, they didn't want to have a roof covering on it or anything, but they don't seem to. But as far as outdoor storage areas goes, it's pretty neatly kept. But that is, that is what, that's how it turned out. And we just wanted to share that with you. We'll get you that different perspective at your next meeting and we will, we will have a meeting the first Tuesday in March. And we have, it's an unusual request because there's no plating involved, but there is a piece of property north of Long MacArthur Ford. And that property used to be owned by KDOT. And it was part of, if you've been, any of you have been around Salina for a long time, you will remember what we call the slip ramps where there was no interchange at Schilling. You got off I-135 kind of midway there on Ninth Street, went over to Ninth Street and then went up to Schilling. That was abandoned when the Schilling interchange was built. And that property then reverted to the ownership of Long MacArthur. They've never done anything with it. It's zoned agricultural. And we went through all the steps of deciding where, on what circumstances, an electronic changeable copy billboard might be allowed. And they are only allowed within 200 feet of an interstate highway, so there is proposal to put one up there. But since it's zoned agricultural, it has to be zoned to a commercial designation to allow it. So that will be the rezoning and the plan for that will be coming forward to you. But that is, that was where it ended up, where the only permissible locations are properly zoned locations within 200 feet of an interstate highway and they're not allowed on agricultural zone property. And since that property, Long MacArthur had not made any effort to change it from its agricultural zoning, they are now proposing to change that so that it can be the home to a sign. So that will be on your next agenda. We'll have obviously more details for you at the time, but it's, it is basically that area between Long MacArthur Ford and the Hilton Garden Inn that they got title to from KDOT, but just haven't done anything with. But as I said, I guess we can test all of your memories to see who up there remembers what Schilling Road was like before there was an interchange there. But there was, there was the slip ramps where you slipped off the interstate and slid over to Ninth Street and then made a left turn on Ninth before you got to Schilling Road. There was, there was just a bridge, but no ramps at Schilling.
What year did that change? Because I have a vague recollection of it.
It was about 1990 and '91 in there when it, they kind of all came at the same time, but there was a proposal to build a Walmart store out there right around 1990. And then the city got funds to build a full interchange there at Schilling Road to replace the slip ramps. And so that changed all of that dynamic out there was mostly a result of going from no interchange to an interchange. So, and you can argue that maybe the traffic flow out there is not the best, that it could be. It's not real easy to make turns or get out of there sometimes, but it is, it all happened right around that timeframe. And once the Schilling Road interchange was in place, the slip ramps were removed. That was declared surplus property. KDOT tried to sell it. Court said they couldn't sell it. It could only go back to the owners from whence it originated. So it reverted back half to the property to the north. So Hilton Garden Inn is built on property that was KDOT right of way. And that area between Long MacArthur Ford and Hilton Garden Inn was KDOT right of way that Long MacArthur Ford now owns, so.
Interesting. So I guess there's nothing public forum?
No further activity for you tonight. I can't tell. It kind of let up right at four o'clock, but I don't know what's been going on in the meantime, so everyone travel home safely.
Have a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Maybe I'm following the right protocol.
Yes, we were supposed to have a motion to adjourn and then write it down, so.
So we got...
I got Eisenhower with the motion and somebody second that?
Actually, it was good. It doesn't matter.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.